Thank you, we'll call the meeting to order. I have my agenda here somewhere. And, uh... Maybe I don't have my agenda, thank you very much. We'll start out with a roll call, please.
Okay, Newton?
Here.
Swift?
Here.
Green?
Here.
Ackerman?
Here.
Kirline?
Here.
Gonzalez Parver? Chair Fragoso?
Here, thank you. Approval of the agenda, I see we don't have a consent calendar, are there any changes?
I'd like to add, um, discussion items on the agenda after number three.
Okay, that sounds good, we usually do have some discussion items.
If I could request that maybe we move the discussion item after number two, because I will be recusing myself for number three and also for the approval of the minutes after that, so I would be able to leave if we could have the discussion item before that. But that would be according to the wishes of, among others, the applicant.
I would think, um, I probably would rather go with doing all the applications first and then doing discussion items, I don't know how lengthy the discussion items would be, just my thoughts.
Well, I don't know what it is, but it could be, so let's, I'll go with that, yeah.
Okay, let's move forward then with the agenda the way it is and we'll add discussion items. Is that the only recusal that we have this evening on tonight's agenda? Not hearing any other, okay. Meeting protocol, I think everyone is familiar with meeting protocols, we're respectful of each other, basically. And we have a new director of planning and building services, let's get that introduction.
Yes, I'd like to introduce Ben Berto, he spent 15 years at Marin County of Marin Community Development. We're really glad to have him onboard because we've been without a director for eight months. And I think you also worked in Mill Valley, right?
Cortomadera.
Cortomadera, for how many years?
Ten years.
Ten years, so he's very familiar with Marin County and he grew up in San Anselmo and attended St. Rita's, so, he's a local guy.
Took a local guy.
Yes, I don't know what else I can say, I'm delighted to have been selected as your planning director, look forward to many more years. You've got wonderful staff and it's kind of interesting coming from the county where you're in the civic center and kind of above the fray. And then you, every day I hear children chattering in the park and there's so much energy, so it's a good feel and a nice change and all sorts of things going on. And I'm already getting filled, briefed in on various things and, you know, new topics come up every day, so it's going to be a very interesting experience, I can tell, and one that'll be very engaging as well. So I'm glad to be here and look forward to working with your commission and the council.
It's very good to have you onboard and yes, there's a lot happening for a small town. Definitely in the fray, we get into the bushes of things, so looking forward to working with you. Let's move on, we have an item for public comments of anything that's not on our agenda tonight. If anyone has an announcement or a public comment not on our agenda, this is your chance. Okay, not seeing any action there, we have no consent calendar, so we'll move on to our first public hearing, which is 1569 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard, application 1720, a continued consideration of a request for a modification of a conditional use permit approved in '05 and parking variance to convert an existing 660 square foot barn structure for use as a daycare space with additional second-story office space, is that still happening? Let's have the staff report and you can clarify that.
So when you heard this last month, the project included a remodel and expansion of the barn. That, you directed them to consider making some modifications to the plan, so the barn is no longer being expanded in their most recent submittal. And this is an existing use permit for a daycare, it's currently operating and has been operating for many years in the front residentially, it was built as a residence, the front building, but it's been used fully as a daycare for many, many years. They now want to expand to convert the barn so they have additional indoor space for some additional children. And so at your last meeting, you took public testimony, heard from the neighbors, discussed the project, and you continued the meeting tonight. You directed the applicant to explore the following modifications. Alternative paths and improvements to direct parents into the rear yard other than the gate at the southeast corner of the barn that's currently used. Privacy improvements and or landscaping that will screen and help mitigate noise impacts from children and parents congregating in the rear yard area, particularly how the noise and view impacts on the neighboring property at 16 Ramona Way in San Anselmo, ways to minimize the impacts on that property. The house was built very close to the property line. And you asked them to consider improvements that will help direct parents and children away from that eastern portion of the rear yard to play away from that kitchen window. So the applicants have provided amended floor plans and elevations for the barn, depicting modifications of the entry porch, one of the neighbors' concerns was that there was an extended entry porch that ran almost the entire width of the barn on the side that faces his property, they've scaled it back so now it's just a covered entry stoop. What else have they done? They removed the second-floor dormer, that was another concern, there was going to be a window facing that neighbor's property and it actually isn't working out with their budget, so they were happy to modify that and they've replaced it with a skylight to get some light up into that office area. They've also relocated the access path and entrance gate to the west side of the barn, that's as far away from the neighbor's property as they can get it. And they've designed a mounted landscaping berm that would be planted with plants and trees that will reach varied heights with the tallest tree species immediately adjacent to 19 Ramona as a way to provide a visual screen and hopefully provide a noise buffer. You also had concerns that there wasn't a fence proposed between the beauty bar next door and the site, which was a very valid concern, and they were, they're completely willing to put up a fence. They haven't submitted a design of the fence because they're hoping to work with the neighboring property to come up with a design that's acceptable to both property owners. But we amended the resolution, I hope we did, I think we did, indicating that the design of the fence shall be subject to the planning director's approval prior to issuance of the building permit for the project. They also revised the parking plan at staff's recommendation because when the building official and the fire department started looking at it, they realized that they're probably going to have to put in an accessible parking spot, which was the case, so they've provided the accessible parking space and a ramp to the barn. And unfortunately, that has resulted in a decrease of one space to the site. But we feel that the way, the supplemental information they've provided that shows how the parents stagger their, you know, the parents aren't arriving all at the same time and a lot of them walk and bike, we still don't feel that the requested exception is going to create any problems, but as I indicated before, it is a use permit and if we do start having, you know, jam-ups, traffic jams on Sir Francis Drake Boulevard, we can call the use permit up and then we'll have to either come up with some other mitigation measures or revisit the issue and see if there's some kind of a solution to it. So we are recommending that you approve the modification to the use permit, application 1517, based on the findings and subject to the conditions in the attached resolution number 1720, based on the revised plans. The owner was concerned because the original fire department requirement said that the fire department was going to require that they sprinkler both buildings because of this remodel, but I checked with the fire department, that is not the case. They only have to sprinkler the barn. If they do start modifying or doing remodeling to the front building, that's when they will be required to sprinkler that building. So that would conclude our report.
Are there any questions of clarification for staff before we move into the public hearing?
So I had a couple of questions on the staff report on page three, the first, the top paragraph. If you could clarify what goes in that last sentence that says landscape, security, per end, question mark?
Yeah, so our intention was to include a landscaping security in the resolution, I thought I did it, but it's been kind of crazy. Because what we typically do when someone has a landscaping planting bed as a condition, we require that they provide a security to us or a bond in an amount to cover the landscaping material and the irrigation and then we hold it for 18 months to make sure that the irrigation is, you know, continues to work and the landscaping becomes established to a point where the plants can make it on their own if someone forgets a week watering.
I think it's in the resolution, it just wasn't clear in the staff report.
Yeah, yes, thank you.
And then the paragraph after that?
Yeah, that's the part, the condition about that the design of the fence shall be subject to the planning director's approval prior to issuance of the building permit.
Okay.
That's awesome.
Okay, great. And then, oh, sorry. Then the staff report mentions that there's three parking spaces out in front, but there's actually...
There's actually two.
Four.
Well, there's two in front of this property and two in front of, yes, that is correct. Yeah, that was an error, yeah.
Just to clarify, is condition 11 that one that's the paragraph, second paragraph down on page three of the report, is that condition 11?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
On that same proposed fence that we don't have the design for, that's on the west side of the barn?
Yes.
Would that be like immediately behind the barn or further over up on the southern side of the property line?
It's going to run down the western property line and the building is pretty much right on the western property line, so I'm assuming it will start at the back of the front building and run down to join up with the fence that already exists.
Oh, I see that, okay.
Halfway down the property.
Yes.
Where the rear yard starts at the back of the barn, the south side of the barn.
Okay, that's a good idea, thank you. Any other questions or clarifications of staff? If not, then is the applicant here, would you like to make a comment? Button, you'll get a red light like this and you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, it's Dave Segali, the property owner, and...
Excuse me, sir, can you hold on just one moment, we'll have, we'll get this recorded for...
End of turn of lights.
For the record. The light's on? Oh, is it going to get hotter? It's a little, can you turn the fan this way? I think if we get a fan turned this way, it would offset the lights, thank you. Okay, is that tape recorder ready? Okay, sir, thank you, please proceed.
Hi, I'm, it's David Segali, I'm the property owner and the designer, I'm also a general contractor. We're hoping that modifications that we had discussed at the previous meeting, we were willing to make those changes and improvements and we hope that what we've come up with will meet the standards of the commission and thank you very much for your consideration.
My name is Shelby Green, I'm the, one of the owners of the school in question and I also want to extend my thanks for your review and your suggestions and we hope that we can continue through with this and work with the town and community to provide a really good childcare situation for all the residents in our area.
Okay, thank you, well, we certainly appreciate your accommodating the neighbors and the commission's concerns, thank you. Were there any questions of the applicants?
I had, I had one question, the staff report talks about in the background, number three, improvements that will help direct parents and children away from the eastern portion of the rear yard, et cetera, what are those improvements?
Currently, the access to the backyard is on the east side of the barn and that is closest to the neighbor who had concerns of the noise and the congregating at the entry of the gate into the backyard. So what we did was we, instead, we're going to raise that fence up so it creates a little bit more of a barrier, right now it's only about four to five feet tall, so we'll get that up to six feet and we'll create the primary entrance into the backyard to be on the west side, the beauty bar side, as hopes to then keep any kind of noise from the kids going from one building into the backyard as far away from the neighbor's possible property as we could.
I'm sorry, sir, could you, is that entrance would be along the property line, along the existing childcare center and the barn or over, further over towards the beauty bar?
It would start at the, I guess it would be the far southwest corner of the existing gray house and that fence would then run the property line between the beauty bar and the barn until it intersected the existing fence that's there now.
Then it would come from the parking area around the west side and down that property line to the back?
Correct.
That should make a huge difference for the neighbors, I would think, thank you. Comments?
I'm assuming that the folks at the beauty bar are aware of that change and are okay with it, because I do note that they are farther away from the, from your property line than the people at Ramona, on Ramona Way, that's...
The beauty bar has been in the process of changing ownership and we don't know what they're planning to do there. There's been some stuff floated about different types of businesses that they want to operate there and consequently, that's the reason why we haven't put forth a design for a fence there until we find out, you know, what kind of business they're going to do, what would be an appropriate fence, we don't know if it needs to be a semi-transparent fence or if it should be an opaque fence. We're thinking if it's an adult use at the beauty bar, we would want some sort of opaque barrier between that and the childcare center. But until we actually meet the new owner and find out what their proposal is, we're not quite sure how to proceed with that.
But in any case, that's around the back of the beauty bar building and so their main entrance is on the front on the Sir Francis Drake side, so...
That's correct, it would be at the parking lot portion of the beauty bar.
Sir, what do you anticipate your time schedule to be for the renovations of the barn and ultimately the construction of that second fence on the west property line?
We would like to start construction as soon as possible. So we've been, you know, sitting on pins and needles, waiting for your approval and then to move on to the next step, which would be going to the building department and finding out what requirements the building department would have.
Okay, okay, and I have to compliment you on the suggested idea for the fence on the east property line with the berm and fencing and trees, it's, it seems like a really excellent barrier. Have you heard anything from the folks of Ramona Way on that? Whether they, they feel that should take care of their security needs, their privacy needs?
I haven't had lengthy discussion, but we did talk a little bit tonight as we came in and I expressed my interest to want to work with Jim on that and he was happy to want to work with us too, so I'm hoping... Was it good interpretation?
Thank, yeah, your button?
Oops, okay, did you hear me okay?
Yes, and they're here, obviously, they can also make a comment, thank you very much. Okay, sir?
Oh, come back, I have a question. I was trying to compare the revised plan for the existing childcare center and the plan from April, just in terms of the existing childcare center and how they egress out of there to the backyard, the playground area. I see two sets of stairs on the little plan, the 11 by 17, but on the April plan, I only see one set. So I was wondering if you could explain to me how they egress and then turn or... I don't know if those two, if I'm reading this correctly, are those two sets of stairs?
The egress out of the back of the building is one set of stairs, it's, it's a concrete deck that has concrete stairs that drop down into the backyard in the area where you see the proposed handicap parking. That's the egress out to the back, the front egress is at the front door.
Okay, so the stairs, I guess, descend toward the east?
Yeah, there is also a set of existing stairs that go out to the side of the building, is that what you're looking at, that are exiting the building towards San Anselmo?
No, no, I see another, and maybe they're not stairs, maybe it's something else. They're tiny and they're going in the direction of the backyard to the south, so maybe it's just, that's maybe a...
Would you mind if I just came up and looked at what you're...
Sure, sure, that would be great.
Commissioner, are you referring to page A5 of the larger plans?
A1. Of the little ones.
Oh, yeah, no, those are stairs that go into the basement. And that's, get to the underpinning.
Okay, okay, can you repeat that at the, at the public mic? Thanks.
The steps that you were referring to are a series of steps that go into the basement area that brings you to the underpinning of the house. They weren't shown on the other drawings before because we weren't indicating a path to take us to the backyard, so that path is going to go, I wanted to show that we have a room for that path based on where those existing steps are.
And the distance between the parking stall and the future fence is, do you know approximately how wide?
It's approximately three and a half to four feet. The tightest spot is at the corner of the barn, which is just over three feet.
Something else that came to mind, how many staff do you have altogether in both buildings?
Well, we don't have any staff for the secondary building that we're hoping to get approval on because we can't hire a teacher and guarantee a job without knowing that we'll have...
Without having a building, I suppose.
Yes, we currently have eight staff, four of them are full-time and four of them are part-time, varying between 10 and 20 hours a week.
Okay, and where do, where do staff park?
Currently, we're parking between the barn and the, and the house, there's also a space in front of the house and there's the side parking lot under the, under the oak tree on the, I guess that's the eastern side of the house. But we typically usually have about three staff cars there at any one time. Two of our, two of our staff members ride bikes and walk, they live very, very close and so we're fortunate enough not to need all that.
Okay, I hear, is that staff saying they live two blocks away and they walk?
Actually, those are two of the other owners of the, of the property.
Any other questions for the owners? Okay, do, thank you very much. Do the neighbors have any comments that you'd like to make? Please step forward. Get that red light on and give us your name and address, please, for the record.
My name's Jim, I'm Jim Dunnehugh, I'm the owner of 16 Ramona Way. I submitted very late today, about 3:30, a two-page set of comments for the plan for you guys to review. It's not my intention to go through every one of them because I'm hoping that they become minor points that I can just wrap up with the owners, so on and so forth, concerns. One of my biggest concerns was that after, so by the way, I'm very happy with the set of proposals and the modifications and thank you for helping me get what I was looking for as regards noise and privacy, I just wanted to say that. But I, after, after last meeting, I guess I was expecting that the owners or somebody would reach out to us and invite comments on what, on the quality of the bed, garden bed, the size of it, other various things, and nobody did. And so I felt a little bit blindsided, the fact that these plans were suddenly just here and coming up for today, and I rushed to, to get my comments in and I considered, I mean, it would have been more efficient if there was a conversation three weeks ago. And the other thing is that I want to also stand up for my neighbors who also, four houses in particular, were talking about noise issues and their concerns have not been addressed in the revised plans. And that was also a concern for me, that Caterpillar Academy hadn't reached out to those neighbors, see what they wanted. I think most of those neighbors don't even know the meeting is on today, some of them are away. The landscaping, of course, the garden bed benefits me a lot in 16 Ramona Way and I'm very happy about that, there are modifications to it, but there is no landscaping proposed that's going to cut down overall sound within the community. And so I was kind of wondering why, I guess, I can talk about that later. But other than that, I, there, there's probably not a lot of, I personally have conditions on, on the modifications and I'd like to get them addressed and I don't honestly have to go through them all tonight or anything like that, I'd rather save time, but they're just my major concerns at the moment.
Okay, okay, thank you. I think that they came in late to the office and I don't believe we have received those yet, have we?
No, staff was, we were busy.
Right, right, staff is very busy at the last minute, but they do have them and, okay...
He can read them, yeah, I asked him to bring copies if they...
That's okay, we can share. We can share some, thank you. And just a question on your comments, when you're referring to the general noise levels and abatement or mitigation of the noise, are you talking about the southern end?
Yes.
Of the property, the residential neighbors on that side?
Yes, and I know that Kelly O'Brien, she was the person who originated the letter that four houses have signed and her concern was landscaping, very much the same noise mitigations on her side that I have. She's, she's in Florida and I wish she could be here, but, so my concern is that, yeah, that those neighbors have, nothing's been done for those neighbors.
Okay.
In this modification, I mean. The, yeah, I mean, the rest are just major, the rest are just little points that, I was very happy that the deck was removed and I was just, just generally here, just, you know, asking questions about the steps down from the doorway. The doorway, the property is almost like at a 24-degree angle to our house, it almost points in our direction and I was kind of wondering, I just put down little points here, you know, like, could those steps be angled away from us? You know the way you can come down, you can come out some steps and you can shoot at a right angle and point away from us? And I was wondering whether, you know, there could be some kind of screening because what I've tend to notice with the school is that when... what I've tend to notice with the school is that when parents come for the kids, the kids are excited and everyone stands, I can imagine the stairs and that doorway being a major parental and teacher area, and I just was looking for some privacy around that. And, and so a lot of my concerns are to do with that, to do with the garden bed, I was wondering why the garden bed is all potted and not actually in the ground. I've no rea, maybe there's a good reason for that. One of the other reasons that I was wondering about is the, is what happens when all those plants have to grow? What happens in the meantime? What are, what are the proposals to stop the sound for the first two years before the plants grow? Could we modify the height of the fence slightly, a little bit? Just a general few things like that, yeah.
Okay.
I don't know if you guys have any questions?
Okay, I think we may have a couple of questions for.
I was just wondering if you were aware, because you, you got these in just today, I was wondering whether you were aware that, of course, tonight's hearing is a continuation of a previous hearing.
Yeah.
So this has been on the agenda and been noticed previously, so.
Yeah, I, I'm not used to planning commissions, like, I, I maybe have one every 10 years to go to, so I was, I guess, in a sense, a newbie, and I, I didn't get a notice in the mail, and I now know why, because it's a continuation, and I kept checking the website, and I couldn't find the plans, the updated plans, and then I found them this morning. So I, I myself have been behind, you know, a bit behind on this, so, yeah. And, and so that hence, that's why I rushed these to you, because I spent a lot of the day trying to make sure I didn't miss an opportunity, yeah.
Any other questions of this gentleman?
Hi, yeah, thank you, Mr. Dunnehu.
Hi.
Did you give a copy of this material that you gave to us, to the, Mr. Segali?
Uh, no, no.
He might, I think it would be good, because a lot of these things are really questions that he needs to potentially answer, so.
Yeah.
If you could give him a copy, and.
Yeah.
Maybe we can hear other public comments, and then get back to Mr. Segali on some of these issues that are raised in your, in your material.
And, and just, just a quick statement to say that the screenshot on the very last page, which is a noise meter, you know, I don't know what the sound of screaming kids is in decibels officially, and I took videos inside my house, not, just to hear, you wouldn't believe the sound of screaming babies inside my laundry room, like, like five feet from the window. And so I know that the, the garden area is going to mitigate that to a certain extent, but what I'm also looking for is, is, you know, I don't want people just to come and put plants down and go, hey, we did what we did. I want to make sure that these plants are meaningful as regards sound mitigation. I want to make sure that, that sound can bounce off things, it can be absorbed in things. I've no idea whether, I don't know any of the particulars about the materials they're using to mitigate sound, and I wanted some way of being able to work with these guys, or you guys going forward if I have to address concerns. I'm not, honestly, I'm not a really picky person in that sense, I just, I just want to get things in place, and then I just want to get on the rest of my life, you know.
I just have one question for you. On page two does show a decibel meter, and it says average 65, maximum 74.
Yeah.
When was that recorded?
That is, I do, that was about 10 days ago.
No, I mean, what time of day? Was that, would you say that was when the children were making the kind of noise?
Yes, yes. And they, they, they're still, they still congregate about a foot from my fence, under the shade. They have for last, since the last meeting, and I, there's, there's a little frustration in me that I couldn't show you guys videos of what it actually sounds like in and around my house. Like, you go, wow, somebody can live here beside a school, and, and so, and so that's, if I could, that decibel meter was, I can't send you these videos because you're not allowed to accept videos in that regard, although it was only for you to hear the sound, not the images. I'm not allowed to do that because of your rules, apparently, so the decibel meter was just showing you that, I believe, if this is a residential area, the decibels should be 50. If there's a loud sound, like a screaming kid, it is reduced by five decibels, that's 45. I'm.
Well, let me, let me ask you, how do you feel about the sound level in this room?
I think the sound in this room is, seems fine. I think, I think.
Well, we're, I just, we're averaging 71 decibels.
Yeah.
And it goes, when it's quiet, it's 60 decibels, when you didn't talk.
Yeah.
So I think the best, we do allow video, we have allowed videos, I mean, have a decibel meter going. We have allowed videos, right? Remember that project with the, the walkway that the fire department?
That was, that was a staff-prepared video. I spoke with the clerk today, and she said it's the policy of the town not to allow the general public to start showing videos, so that was prepared by staff, that access video.
Okay, then, then what I'd recommend for you, take a video and show it to your neighbor, and talk to him about that.
Okay.
Instead of showing us.
And, look, I'm not sure, I'm not a philosopher, but maybe screaming babies and kids has a different sound. And the other thing is that it tends to be, at times, a continuous sound, and it tends to last a lo, a large part of the day. And if you are working from home or the neighborhood, it can, it can have, it's a noticeable sound without breaks sometimes.
We don't seem to have other questions at this moment for you, sir. Maybe we'll see if there are any other comments from, from the audience, perhaps there's other neighbors here, and we might take just a moment to look over your comments, maybe ask a few questions of staff as well. Yes?
Also in the house, remember?
Can you turn your mic on? You need to get a red light.
Sure.
And state your name.
Alish Dunnehu, and I'm actually a teacher, and I work with special needs, so I totally understand, and I love the kids, and I think they're great, but there's no communication, that's the biggest thing. I feel like there's zero communication to have a really good environment, to be able to connect and to be able to communicate with each other, and it's just basically, it's them, and it's us, and it's become, honestly, it's become horrible, and it's really super loud. I mean, I work with special needs kids, and I have for 20 years, so I do know, and I totally understand that kids are kids, but it's not, there's no communication, even when they have parties or whatever, there's no, like, we can't walk up our front stairs without, like, people staring at us. There's no privacy at all.
Have you attempted to communicate with them, or have you kind of been waiting for them to approach you?
Well, we were told the last meeting that they were going to come talk to us, so now I haven't. Plus, I work, I work in a public school now, and I work as a behaviorist.
Okay.
After school. So, and that's my biggest concern, is there's zero communication, and I think that's, to have a complimentary environment, I think is super important, and to be respectful about other people's needs, and we literally are on top of them, it's like our house is there.
I've been there, I see how close that is.
It feels like they're in our house, it really does. And it's not, and it's, it's not the kids, per se, it's just the, it's just the continual lack of privacy. So, anyway, that's, I just wanted to add that. And we do have a lot of people that complain about it, they're just not here today because we didn't know until last night or this morning that this was going to happen. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. I, I certainly understand your concerns. Comment or a question, please come forward, and come forward, get, hit that mic so you get a red light, and give us your name, please, your address, and, and feel free to make your comments, that's why we're here.
Hi, I've, I'm, my name is Marion Rollins, I'm one of the owners of the school. I've worked there for about seven years now. I wouldn't recognize these people, to be honest with you, until today. I've never had any interaction with them. I can say that as far as the noise level goes, our children are out there no earlier than 10:00 in the morning, and gone by 11:30 usually, and those are the summer hours, five days a week. So we're talking about basically a two-and-a-half-hour period of time, five days a week. We're not there any nights, we close at 5:30, we're not there all day and night Saturday or Sunday, and we resume our business Monday through Friday. In the winter months, we're barely out there, depending on weather, of course, we use our front porch. As far as noise decibels go, I do know that this gentleman happens to use his leaf blower a lot, and we hear it in, when we're out there, but we don't say anything because that's, that's his business. We're more than willing to accommodate. As far as congregating with families, we don't do that outside, so I'm not sure where that comment's coming from. Our families need to sign their children in and sign them out, which happens in the farmhouse on a register. So our families don't congregate outside, they're there to pick their children up, they pick them up and they leave. They never drop them off outside because we're never there at that hour. Rarely are we there at pickup. Maybe it's happened three times this year. We're usually up in the farmhouse. So we're talking about, at the very most, five days a week between the hours of 10:00 and 11:30. Some days we have lunch out there until 12:30, weather permitting, again, also be permitting. If it's not safe for them, we take them inside. So our children, I have to say on a personal level, I'm getting just a little offended because our children are not screaming terrible children, they're, they're zero to three years old, and they're learning their social skills, and nobody wants to, trust me, congregate underneath this man's window. We have pushed the entire yard and everything except for a small block table away from his house to try and accommodate him. And, you know, short of telling these children, don't go over there, it is their yard. Half of them don't even walk, half of them are just crawling, or even sitting in, in boppies at the other end of the, of the yard. So that's, that's just all I wanted to say.
Question for you, so are you saying that in the afternoon, there's no outdoor playtime?
There isn't, no.
During the school year at all?
No. Maybe one, we've maybe been out there twice this year after lunch. They wake up, period, they wake up at different hours throughout the afternoon, so we need to be in that farmhouse, and then once they wake up, if we go outside, it's on the front porch, it's nowhere near the yard. But at the same time, I don't want to exclude that possibility at some point, you know, but at this point, we're not. We just aren't.
Could you clarify, when you say farmhouse, do you mean?
It's the gray building.
The gray building in front?
Yes, that houses the school.
Okay.
Currently.
All right, I'm, I'm also, I'm looking at some photographs here of the fence.
The photographs, by the way, that he presented last week, happened to be two teachers and one parent picking up their child. It wasn't a bunch of parents talking, it was me, I believe, and another coworker, and one mother.
Okay, I understand. I do see a number of items placed against the fence, a wash basin and the trash, and a couple of tables, and some.
No, it's not trash, it's the green yard waste.
Okay.
There is no trash up there.
And a couple of little tot cars, and?
That's at the, the very far end, there's nothing, there are no cars.
Right, that is down, that is down towards the end.
There's no cars on his side of the fence.
Okay, okay, well.
Thank you.
You know, it, it just, it, it sounds to me like you all need to get together and chat a little bit more.
That would be nice.
Yeah, and, and obviously, everyone's waiting for someone else, perhaps, to make that, that initial gesture, but, well, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
I see there's, there's a few more responses.
I actually have one more question. Oh, I'm sorry. I just have a question about the future schedule. Right now, the schedule that you were talking about is for the, the little kids, but when the bigger kids, I guess, come on board, how does that work with your daily schedule? Or how will that work?
The children are going to have to share the yard, the, any older kids that we may eventually have are not supposed to be in the yard at the same time as the children, so there's not going to be a doubling or even an increase in the number of children at any one time. The state, the state doesn't let us do that, so there's not an increase, per se, and they're going to have to split the time outside.
So does that mean that?
Does that answer that question?
So does that mean you would have one time outside for the younger kids and a whole separate time, so you'd have kids out there potentially twice in the day?
Yes, not to get too detailed about infants and toddlers' nap and eating schedules, typically what has to happen is children wake up very early in the morning, they get dropped off at school, they have breakfast, which happens in the house, many of them play for about an hour and a half, that usually brings us to about 9 o'clock. We then will start getting ready to go outside, so sometimes we can get outside about 9:30, around 10 o'clock is more typical. Any child that's going to be going to bed at, say, 10:30 or 11:30, will go outside for a small period of time, come back inside, eat their pre-nap snack. The older children, who can play a little bit older, or, excuse me, a little bit longer, will be having their snack while the other, the younger children are outside, and then they will come and join out as the younger children come in for their, for their naps. And pretty much all of this is wrapped up between the hours of 12:30 and 3:00, when the major napping is happening.
So there's afternoon time outside as well?
There is. In the summer, it's very difficult for us to spend a great deal of time outside because of the heat, so we typically take use of the porch in the house. Again, we can't split the group too much because there has to be a certain level of supervision for the entire group, which means there has to be teachers inside for the people who are sleeping, waking up, having their second snack. So the afternoon, it does get used on occasion, but the majority of that time is between 3:00 and 4:00, if it happens at all.
Okay, just, if, if the barn plan is to use it as a play area, well, that, does that not mean that kids will be inside playing more often?
Yes, we'll have a significant increase in our inside's play space, which means we won't need that extra space of the yard. We're so fortunate to have that wonderful outdoor space, but it can't always, we can't have our school outside, we're not quite at that, that level in our society where they allow that.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, this might have been covered, but I, my memory lapses. How many children do you currently have in your program?
Currently, we have 20 families. We have a cap of 18 families in the farm, in, excuse me, in the gray building, the current childcare, and we have, for instance, today, nine children at the school during the whole day. And at our max, we can take up to 18, but we typically keep it about 15. Group size makes a big difference for the early years.
Okay, and then when you, when you increase your program capabilities, you would be using the barn more for the older kids, and how many would there be of the older children?
We're going to have to wait to licensing to know exactly how many we can have. Our hope is to get licensed for 15, although it's possible that it's going to be down around 12, at which point we're going to take some children out of the main house and move them into the barn building, probably about six. It, again, ages depend on.
Sure.
And what families we have available. But we're hoping to take six of the children out of the main house and put them in the barn, and then slowly grow it over time to. barn, and then slowly grow it over time to, say, ten. Twelve is the maximum recommended group size. So even if we were licensed for fifteen, we wouldn't want to stretch it past that.
And most of the play activity would happen inside the barn or inside the front house?
A good deal of it, yes. Just for practical, practicality, access to hand washing and napping areas and food preparation, et cetera.
Okay. Thank you.
May I also state that I didn't actually send a copy of this letter to the council. I reached out with about a one-page letter to all of our neighbors in the area, asking them to contact us. And we asked them that, told them we'd love to work with them and hear any of their complaints and concerns. I haven't heard back from a single family. But I did want you to know, I have reached out to the neighbors in the area via mail.
When, when was that?
I believe it was just, I believe it was just after the, or possibly the week of the last town meeting or the, the last committee meeting.
Would that be all your immediate adjacent neighbors?
Yes, about a week before. I went online, I saw the complaints and the letters, and I really wanted to address that because we do want to have a good relationship with our, with our neighbors. And, and we do, for the ones that we have seen and talked to. I've, I have run into a few of the neighbors before, and it has always seemed very cordial. And I was very saddened to see that it was such an issue, that the noise was such an issue. It was a very much, I know that kids do make noises, so I'm not completely blown away. But I did not think that it was to this degree that, that they wanted to have a lot of landscaping or, say, taller fences. Nobody had ever come to me to suggest that, so. But I have reached out to the neighbors, and I wanted that to go on record.
Okay.
But that was it.
Thank you.
I, I would just like to respond to some of those comments.
To us, please.
Oh, sorry, to some of those comments that were just made earlier. It, it is true that for the last few months, the kids are out there from about, almost just before ten till around midday or something. But historically, they have been out there throughout most of the day. And in particular, there's a play structure only about eight to ten feet from our fence, our, also our entranceway of our house. And that is used by a particular teacher that I know, that I recognize. And you would not believe the sound. I mean, she's having fun with the kids. But that sound is just, it, it, the kids are hypered, they're screaming, and, you know? That happens as well. And as regards the meeting of the parents in front of my window, I have a picture here from about ten o'clock this morning with two parents and two teachers right in front of my window. And I have it here, and that can be checked and double-checked or verified. So some messaging is not getting through in, in terms of what I'm just saying right now. It, there, there is a lot of business done in front of our window, and I, I would like that to stop. And I don't understand why I'm not, it's not getting through. The other thing is that, historically, I reached out to, Sky, Sky Bailey was the person who had the original permit, and she promised me that she'd only be there in the morning time. And I went, "You know what? It's a great, let's have a school there." And she brought, so I went, when I went to the plan, to the town planning, I had no objections. I said I support the school. And she actually reneged on that promise and had parents and kids out through the, through the evenings. And I was stuck. And I personally reached out to her husband and had her husband walk into our house and explain things.
That's a prior...
That's prior, exactly. And so I've ended up with it, I guess, in many ways, thinking, "These people don't care." I didn't know that the school was sold only about a, a year or two ago. And so, yeah, there, there's this, there is this gap between them and us. And, and I would, I'd be very happy to demonstrate at any time, and if anybody wanted to walk into our house and see what it is like and what it feels to us from Caterpillar Academy, they'd be very welcome, so.
Can, can I ask, Mr. Donahue, did you receive that letter?
Yes, I did. I, I received the letter, and I have to say that I still felt the school needed to reach out in a, they reached out with a letter, but their, their letter was more, "Come to us if you have issues." And I expected them to more come to me because people who are doing the planning are usually the people who reach out to their neighbors and the community, and they go, "Hey, what do you think of what we're doing?"
Can I ask, was there a phone number on there?
I can't honestly remember, yeah. I, I have to say that my conversation with the owner of the property, David Segali, has been very, much more promising. He does seem to recognize, historically, what I've just described. And he does seem to be a person I think I'd be able to work with. It does seem that way, so. Okay.
All right, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
What would the commission like to do? End it?
Could, could staff just clarify one thing?
Sure.
The plants are going to be planted in the ground. The, the measurement that's, I mean, the gallon sizes, we asked them to tell us what size plants were going to go in the ground, just to make sure they weren't really, really small. So they are going to be in pots.
I realize that. The size of the pot is the size of the potted plant when they are delivered, and then they do get planted in the ground. And actually, fifteen-gallon pots are three to nine feet wide, three to, obviously, they probably won't be eighteen feet high, but they'll be at least six feet high. According to the sketch, I would, I would hope that they would plant a six-foot tree, as indicated in, in the drawing. The six-foot, is there a requirement that the side fence not exceed six feet?
Your town, your town code limits the fence to six feet. If they were going to raise it above six feet, they would have to turn in a fence height application. It would have to be noticed for this, you know, for another meeting, and they would have to return.
What is the height of... What is the height of the existing fence on that property line?
I think Mr. Segali said it's five feet. Oh, it's six feet on the side?
And is that your fence, sir? Or is it Mr. Donahue's fence? It's Mr. Donahue's fence, and it's about six feet tall?
So...
Thank you for that. Thank you for that clarification. If there are no more comments from the pub... Oh, I was going to close the public hearing.
Well, I was gonna ask if we could talk to the applicants again, just briefly.
To the owner?
Well, about, I think they've just had an opportunity to see the, the issues that Mr. Donahue had raised in his late message. And I was just wondering, I know it's kind of putting you guys on the spot, but if you had any thoughts about any of the issues that were on this, I'd like to hear it.
Mr. Segali, if you would be willing to respond to this, these comments that we have all just seen, we'd appreciate it.
I just glanced real quickly. The things that jumped out at me were, one, questioning about the planting. Just as you had spoken, the size of the pots are indicating the size of the plants when they're planted. The reason why we raised, created the berm was so that we could create a barrier that was higher than six feet to create more privacy and a better sound block. The tearing of the plants was to absorb the sound, and, as I said, the wax myrtle was to get, was to create the, the privacy barrier. The gate, we still need to have an access on that side to be able to facilitate the backyard. But the reason why, it would only be as a secondary use, but more for utilitarian purposes, get wheelbarrows and whatnot back there in order to, to maintain the backyard. The entrance, as I said before, is going to be on the opposite side, away from the neighbor. As far as the porch goes, the porch is a minimum-size stoop. It's not going to really facilitate any meeting in that area. It's going to be a way to exit and enter the building only. I, I don't know that there's anything that we would be willing to do as far as raising the fence, being that that is a criteria that's set out by the town for a maximum height. And I'm not sure, oh, as far as reaching out goes, when my father passed away, I wrote Jim a letter to, to let him know that I was now taking over from my dad, and that if there was any kind of problems or questions or anything that was going on with the property, to please contact me and let me know, and we would do whatever we would need to do about that. Never heard from him until this whole process started. So I think that there's a couple of problems here. One is that perhaps maybe the previous operator had some conflicts with Jim that I was not aware of. But that's not us. That we have a new operator there, and we're trying to do the best we can. The idea of the berm and the garden in that area, if you notice on the plan, we belly the berm out, and the idea of that is to move all of the facility that's against the fence over into the middle of the property or onto the other side of the property. So our intentions aren't to use that auxiliary gate as a way to enter the property in the back or to, to create play areas that are close to the property line. You'll notice, too, on the berm, we, we line the bed with a series of stones that'll help hold the berm in place, so that'll be a permanent island of, of privacy. And that, and we hope that that, you know, will help work things out. Now, as I said to Jim before, I'm more than willing to work with him. There are events that happen. Sometimes, you know, there's a birthday. Sometimes, there's a graduation, or there's things like that that happen where, you know, the neighbors all get notified that that's going to be going on. And if, in fact, there was something that was coming from you, Jim, as far as a quiet time that's required, I'm sure that we can work around that, you know? If he's intending to entertain in such a way where, you know, loud noise in the background, in the, in the back might be a problem, that's being a neighbor. And so we're hoping that, that we can work together and be good neighbors. I don't know if there's anything else on here that I can address at this point in time.
Thank you for your comments. I also noticed that you are raising that fence and gate to six feet on the eastern side.
Yes.
And that, from what I can tell, what it looks like on the sketch, you have two, four, six, eight, eight of the larger trees proposed for that side, which covers a good fifteen, twenty feet approximately. And so it, it seemed to me to be a, a good solution to creating a barrier there.
That was the idea.
And I, excuse me, I forget what the rear of the property looks like. I know there's one large oak tree. Is there more than the one large tree towards the southern end of your property line?
The, the main, that's the main landscaping feature. There is a huge valley oak back there. And there are some other smaller shrubs and trees that are on that portion of the property. But they're more over towards the neighbor on the west side of the property. They're not continuous across that portion of the property.
Okay, okay. Thank, thank you for your responses. Does the commission have any questions for the owner?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Segali and Mr. Douglas. Was it Donahue?
Donahue.
Thank you. I always get names confused. I think we may be ready to close the public hearing. Thank you all for your comments, and bring it back to discussion with the commission and staff.
Okay, here, I, I could move to approve this, this CUP because the barn, we're talking a lot about the past, the neighbor is. Mr. Donahue, absolutely respect your privacy. There's no issue with this. And, and it is a used permit, as staff has said before. Used permit is subject to neighbor complaints, so if we issue this permit, we're not taking a huge chance. But I think what's going to happen is the barn is going to eliminate a lot of noise, allowing kids to play indoors more. And some of these concerns can be addressed by signage within the outdoor play area that could just direct people away from the house. And I think you've done a lot of what you can do. You've changed the barn back to a barn, but made it, and made it, you know, kept its historical character. And so I could move to approve this and, and see, you know, how it goes.
Can, can I say a couple of things? When I looked at this, I was very pleased, the revisions, because they show intent. Anybody who's ever had to hire an architect or landscape architect to produce, you know, I guess, a refined design knows that it takes a lot longer than thirty days. So the intent that I see here, I think, proves to me that the operator has the right, you know, the right attitude toward the neighborhood. I was also very happy to hear about the letter because I was trying to figure out why that hadn't happened, the letter out to the neighborhood. I think it's a shame that this list came so late. Mr. Donahue was here when we said we would reconvene in July. So I really wish that this letter had gone out to the operator sooner, so that they would have a chance to respond. I, I think, in this case, both parties have a responsibility to communicate. They're the applicant, but if you have grievance, I think it's also your responsibility to go to them. They issued a, a letter. I think that's like an invitation. You either, you know, RSVP, say, "I'm not coming," or "I am coming." So I think with the intent that I see here from the operator, you know, I'm convinced that that might be enough to start a dialogue because a lot of these things on the list here are very well thought out. But these things take time to resolve. And, you know, I'm thinking about locking the gate and how does that affect egress? So overall, I was very happy to see the intent, and I see that the dormer's gone. I didn't mind the dormer so much, but it's gone now. It's not an issue. The deck is gone. It's now a stoop. And the applicant has rerouted traffic away from the gate, as we suggested. I also think it is going to take some time to develop that mound in terms of what it really looks like and what's on there. There, I don't know about Fairfax, but I know that in other jurisdictions, you can add two feet of lattice above a six-foot fence. So maybe that's something that can be added to help mitigate the noise. So I think this is a good start, but I think the, the neighbor, Mr. Donahue, I think, I think you might want to reach out to, or be a little bit more proactive. I really appreciate you coming to these meetings, and I think it has been very revealing. And I'm sorry that you are so close to the playground. I'm sure that's not what you signed up for when you purchased this house. But it is, you know, what it is now. They have a right to operate. You have a right to privacy. So let's, let's try to work together and, and work out these details because these details do take time. So I, I also, I'm sorry that the history with the previous operator was not that great, but we're talking about a different operator. So what else do I have here? So what else do I have here? I think, you know, overall, this operation sounds, just everything I've heard from the applicant and Mr. Segali, Segali and Ms. Green, they seem like stand-up people and pretty high-quality operation. I think it's important to keep them in our community. So I support this project as is, hopefully with continued cooperation from both sides.
Well, I concur, and I think that was an excellent summary. Yeah, I definitely noticed that both, both of the, or all of the speakers really spoke of missed communications, attempts to communicate that didn't seem to get through. And so, I think there's a good opportunity here to continue with that and actually talk and work this through. Can I just ask one question about the possibility of putting a lattice above the fence? Does that require a fence height variance?
Yes. Your ordinance reads that if a fence exceeds six feet in height, at any point, it requires a variance from the planning commission.
Yeah, so a lattice is included in that. So keep that in mind if, as you all talk, you find that one thing that would make it work better would be an increase in the fence height. It would probably be a pretty straightforward process before the planning commission to come and get that permission. So I would concur that I think we should give a go at this and see if this will work out. I definitely respect the need for this childcare in our community, and I think having it in a neighborhood is actually an appropriate place for it. And so, I hope that we can continue to make it work.
I have a question for staff. We saw the decibel reading from the app on Mr. Donahue's phone, and I checked the table in the code on my phone. And I see that there's two different standards, depending on whether it's residential and commercial, CC, I think it said. So when you have a commercial property abutting a residential, it would still be the commercial standard?
I think that if the playground is in the residential zone, so I think it would be the residential standard, but it's measured from the complainant's property line, right? And the problem that we're having, and it was identified when we updated the general plan, is these noise meter readings, they're already below the traffic noise. And so, when you go out and you're taking noise meter readings, we found this out with Perry's, I'm going to guess that you're getting traffic on Sir Francis Drake. It's very difficult to do, right? But I would be very surprised if the kids were violating the noise ordinance. I think you'd get out there and your meter reading, you wouldn't even be able to really determine what the noise that's coming separately from the children, because the traffic on Sir Francis Drake is so constant and so noisy.
Right, and that's why video is so much better.
That's what we're running into at Perry's Bar, you know, trying to take noise meter readings. The traffic going by is noisier than the music coming from the bar, when the reading is taken from the complainant's property line.
Can we ban the cars?
We wish. Yeah, maybe someday.
Maybe our new planning director would have some ideas on that. Not to put you on the spot.
Long Range plant.
I believe we have the highest proportion, we're the second highest proportion of electric vehicles in the state of California here, so we're moving in the right direction.
All right. I have a couple other points here or questions. On the resolution, on page two, I saw in paragraph seven, a reference to Town Code Section 1796-142, and it should be 122. And on page four, number 10, we have the reference to Design Review Board that should probably be Planning Commission.
Yes, you are correct, because the planning commission acts as the Design Review Board.
They sit as the board.
Yeah, you sit as the Design Review Board.
And on paragraph 11, if we could say a separation fence shall be erected between 1569 and 1573, Sir Francis Drake, I think that would be helpful.
Yes, definitely.
I guess I do want to say that I appreciate Mr. Donahue's, Ms. Donahue's concerns and your participation in this whole process. I think, I'm hoping that, you know, things are going to get better between you and your neighbors, and I think both of you have shown a willingness to work with each other, and I really hope that happens. And I totally get the last-minute thing. You would not have believed how close to 7:00 I was still looking at these materials. So I get that. They didn't necessarily come out until Friday, and we all live, or Saturday, Thursday, Friday, and we are busy. And I think that even though the decibel issues are, you know, problematic in terms of enforcement within Fairfax, that you should talk to Shelby and Mr. Segali when you feel like things are sort of deteriorated, or none of these measures have done what you'd hoped. And just make sure to let them know how you're feeling. And then, I also recommend, if, you know, you're not working things out, that you talk to Linda as well, because as I think Bruce indicated, these, you know, we can hear these things again. They can come back to us if there are continuing problems with the community. So, but I agree that I think we should move forward with approving the revised plans that we've been presented here tonight.
Okay, I would agree with my fellow commissioners and had a couple changes since we're talking the resolution.
Yep.
Are we still doing a height variance?
No.
So we can delete that out of the title.
What page is that on?
Oh, okay.
Sorry, what was the height variance for?
So there was a dormer originally that was increasing the height of one portion of the second floor, but they've removed it.
And the recommended conditions, the number three, where it says the applicant shall reapply for the required use permit from San Anselmo. I'd like that to read, the applicant shall reapply for and receive. And then...
Excuse me, and what is that required use permit, number three?
It's, they might need to explain that. So I know, so they are parking, they're putting some of their parking in San Anselmo, because the property crosses the city limit line. And San Anselmo, for that use, requires a use permit, their use permit expires. And I'm not even, I don't even know if the new owner was aware that there was a use permit that expired.
Maybe we could just specify for the required parking use permit.
Okay.
To have that be clear.
Assuming it's, it was, I mean, a parking permit, I'm not sure we know what that was.
Let's let Dave, he can probably explain it better than me.
When we saw the staff report, we saw that that note was in there in regards to San Anselmo. So on Wednesday of this week, we met, or Tuesday of this week, we met with Elise, with the town of San Anselmo, and she said that they would continue the use permit as is, and that there will be a formal letter written to Linda. Because we first presented a non-formal letter that Elise had signed that said that there was no problem with San Anselmo as far as accessory use of the lot and the parking on the San Anselmo portion. But that I, but since it was still in the staff report, I felt that it was important to have that documented. So we went back to the town of San Anselmo and asked them to please send a letter to Linda, which I'm sure Linda will be forthcoming.
Thank you, sir.
The planning director suggested maybe we could put in wording, which I think is good. The applicant shall reapply and receive the necessary approvals from San Anselmo for the use of that portion. That's at San Anselmo.
Works for me.
Okay, great.
And then, the condition number four at the bottom, and this is kind of a standard thing with me, any modification of these conditions of approval, where the approved plans must be approved by the planning commission. If we would just put in there prior to implementation?
Okay.
I just want...
Okay, go ahead.
One comment. I just want to thank the applicant. I felt that they responded to the issues that were raised in our previous meeting, and I was very happy and pleased with the changes that they made. And I feel that the landscaping that they proposed is more than generous. I, normally, two feet, three feet, little wide landscaping strip is sufficient, and they're proposing more than that. So I approve the project.
Good. I also wanted to reiterate what my associates have said. I believe the owners have been very forthcoming in making all the recommended changes that we've proposed. I understand that Donahue's still have an issue, and I'd like to, I for one, would be willing to consider, if things continue to be a problem, to consider a fence height vari, a fence, a fence height variance for the Donahue's. Should that continue to be an issue after the landscaping barrier is installed? Let's give that a little time, and I would encourage you both to reach out and try to develop a slightly better working relationship. I know, it's difficult. Everyone's busy, but in this situation, I think it would behoove both of you. And I am also ready to hear a motion to approve this project.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the conditional use permit for application number 05-17. And we're eliminating height variance from that. It's no longer necessary. With the amendment suggested by the commission, absolutely. Good, good point.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. The motion carries, there is a 10-day appeal period and a fee of $400, $500 to the city clerk, should you decide to appeal this decision. But the motion does carry, and the project is approved as is. And I hope you guys can work out the fine-tuning of the details. Thank you, thank you all very much. And with that, since we have a complex item coming up, I'd like to take a quick break, please.
Are you all back?
Well, that's how you train them.
Commissioners are back. Let's get moving.
Commissioners are back. Staff is here. Can we get going with the remainder of the planning commission meeting, please? Our next item is 125 Live Oak Avenue, a 50% remodel expansion of a single-family residence. This has been continued for action on a Hill Area Residential Development Permit, parking variance, design review, and encroachment permit. Could we have the staff report, please?
Yes, and I am going to go back and give my original staff report, because so much time has passed since you first heard it.
Okey-dokey.
So in May of 2014, the building official performed a resale inspection of the property, documenting that extensive work had been done to the house that exceeded an exploratory demolition permit issued in 2012. The entire interior of the house had been gutted and excavation had occurred beneath the building. That was a previous owner. In May of 2015, the current owner applied for a Hill Area Residential Development Permit. The work that, the demolition work got to a point where now to put the house back, it's a 50% remodel. 50% remodels in the hillside areas of Fairfax in landslide hazard zones are subject to the Hill Area Residential Development Permit. So the new owner applied for the permit. It took quite a while to get the application complete. It was deemed complete April 7th of 2017. And the project encompasses the reconstruction and remodel of the entire structure. They're also proposing to expand the building by 52 square feet. The resulting house will be a three-bedroom, three-bath residence, 1,962 square feet. The project is going to include repair of the onsite drainage system. There's a V-ditch that's cracked, and they, it's been, their proposed repair has been approved by the town engineer. The project does not change the setbacks maintained by the previously existing structure, except a new deck will extend an additional six to eight feet towards the rear property line. Project complies with setbacks, height, lot coverage, and floor area ratio regulations of the RD 5.5-7 zone where it is located. Purpose of the Hill Area Residential Development Ordinance is to, one, encourage maximum retention of natural topographic features, such as drainageways, streams, slopes, ridge lines, rock outcroppings, vistas, natural plant formations and trees; two, to minimize grading of hillside areas; three, to provide a safe means of ingress and egress for vehicular and pedestrian traffic to and within hillside areas; four, to minimize water runoff and soil erosion problems during and after construction; five, to present the loss of life, reduce injuries and property damage, and minimize economic dislocations from geologic hazards; and six, to ensure that infill development on hillside lots is of a size and scale appropriate to the property and is consistent with other properties in the vicinity. So the town engineer has reviewed soils reports, hydrology reports, he's reviewed the site survey, he's been to the site, he's reviewed the entire body of information and plans, and he's performed two site inspections of the house area. And he is recommending that the planning commission approve the project, because it will not create or increase any geologic, hydrologic, or seismic impacts on public or private improvements in the surrounding area. The project requires design review. The house is not changing much. The exterior is basically going to be the same. It's going to pop out a little bit in the back. And the proposed materials and colors that they're using meet the design review criteria. Homes in this, the Ridgeway Park subdivision on similar-sized parcels with similar slopes range in size from a 1,001-square-foot, two-bedroom, one-bath residence on a 7,140-square-foot property, to a 2,176-square-foot, five-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath residence on a 5,166-square-foot property. Therefore, the proposed 1,962-square-foot, three-bedroom, three-bath residence will not be out of character with the surrounding neighborhood, which also is developed with numerous duplexes and some apartment buildings. In reviewing the project, we determined that, as was pretty typical in Fairfax, a portion of their driveway, their parking deck, is actually in the public right-of-way, and there was never an encroachment permit filed. So when we, when the town allows a private property owner to use a portion of the public right-of-way for their private improvements, an encroachment, revocable encroachment document is supposed to be recorded at the county, and that was never done for this property. It could be that they didn't always require surveys when these houses were built, and so they may not have been aware that the parking deck was in the right-of-way. But we're going to try to clean that up now. the paved road, so it's the only way to provide parking. They also are requesting a parking variance just to legalize the existing parking because your parking is supposed to be on your private property. But in this case, part of the parking is in the public right-of-way. And that is very typical for this neighborhood, you know, because it's so, slopes down so steeply, and Live Oak Avenue is so narrow, the paved portion. The big problem, not a problem, the hurdle that we were facing was trying to find a way to get the required fire truck staging area within an adequate distance from this property. And the applicants had proposed it down, a little bit down the street in, in front of 130 Live Oak. We have, in white, spray painted that fire truck pullout. It does maintain a nine-foot-wide parking spot along the retaining wall for 130, 130 Live Oak, which is what that owner wanted. It also maintains the parking for the property across the street. There, she, the owner, I talked to her today, she was mostly concerned about how strict the police and fire would be if her vehicle maybe crossed four to six inches, you know, accidentally into that fire truck pullout. She was concerned she might get a ticket. But I spoke with both the fire department and the police department, and they said she would have to be projecting like 20% of the width into that area in order for them to issue her a ticket. So I spoke with her. She's fine with it. It's painted out in the field. So the only thing we need to do now is to make sure that that gets memorialized in a drawing to scale that matches what's painted in the field. And we've added that, we put in front of you a revised resolution. I think it's number, we added a condition on page eight. Condition eight, that the site plan submitted with the building permit application shall include the fire apparatus staging area location depicted as it is currently marked in the field with white paint. This drawing will have to be approved as accurately representing the staging area by the Department of Planning and Building Services and the Ross Valley Fire Department prior to issuance of the building permit. So we're recommending that you approve the project. And that would conclude our report.
Wow. That's impressive. So all of these issues were worked out, and all the neighbors are fine with the parking situation and the fire truck turnaround? No one loses their parking spaces?
That's correct.
Amazing.
I have one question. Has the map, the plat map that's referred to, has that been recorded?
So, the planning commission, and we actually polled you at your last meeting, but you weren't here. Our intention, because the town doesn't survey all its right-of-ways when we do street projects, we do these setting of nails so that we don't have to record surveys. We did not set the corners of the property at 130 Live Oak. It was not something that had to be recorded. We set the edge of our public right-of-way along that frontage, and that was acceptable to the town engineer, and you have a memorandum from him indicating that he's okay with that. So it doesn't have to be recorded. And they have submitted a plat that, plat that the engineer has reviewed and accepted as being accurate.
So there, there's no requirement for recordation?
Right.
Okay.
Right. They recorded a property survey for the project site as, as is required by the town code.
I was going to mention government code 66499.30 that would require us to record it before we can approve it if it had to be recorded.
Right, it doesn't.
So we're all set.
Yeah, and, and staff, the town engineer and staff's position is if they were building some kind of a structure or something, we would have felt more strongly that it would have to be a set survey marker and a recorded survey. But it's paint on the street, on an existing street. So we didn't really feel that the expense of a survey was really warranted. And, and most of the commission agreed.
That, that seems like a good call to me.
So just for curiosity, you, you referred to the, the area that's now striped as a fire staging area. Is it a staging area or is it also a turnaround?
No, it's not a turnaround. It's a fire truck apparatus staging area. It's a level enough area where the fire truck can stop, and there's enough room on either side for the fire guys to get all their equipment out, run around, drag hoses, and actually get to all three of those buildings in that area where they really, it's really tight up there on Live Oak. There's portions of Live Oak that are very narrow.
Yeah, that makes a lot more sense to me, because when I saw it, it didn't, I didn't understand why it would be a turnaround. Okay, great, great. Congratulations.
So a question on the painting. So is that white paint permanent? You may have mentioned this in-
No. I mean, when you say permanent, what do you mean? Did we intend it to be a permanent marking of that space? No, the fire department has official markings, and it will have to be painted with, I think they're red.
It'll be striped red probably.
You know, and I think it's crosshatched. And fire said they even put a, they put a sign up.
A sign up?
Yeah.
I have, I think, a silly question. Is the framing on the existing, is the supporting framing on the existing deck remaining, or will that be replaced? Because it looks really wobbly to me.
I believe they're replacing it, but-
Could, could someone, is there anyone who could answer that question?
I'm certain it's being replaced. Yeah, I mean, so, so the town, one of our conditions is that the town engineer has to review the project plans before the building permits issued. And if it's not safe, he's not going, going to allow it to remain, so.
I see.
And it's a wooden deck, right? So they're going to have to replace, they're going to have to replace that with a concrete surface anyway, because it's a 50% remodel, so they'll have to replace the bracing underneath it.
And just to be completely thorough, do we have a sentence requiring that all of those inspections be done and completed, a final check prior to occupancy and final permit on all of those?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's part of the-
Show field check.
Why is that doing that? That's part of the uniform building code requirements. I mean, they can't, they can't get beyond a certain point. They frame, you know, they have to frame, there has to be a nailing inspection. They can't get to the end until everything's done.
I'm good with that. Is there, is the applicant here? Is there anyone that would like to address this project? Either the applicant or the audience? No? Okay, then. We'll, oh, all right, we do have one.
Peter Lacks, 130 Live Oak. My, my concern, of course, was the plans as originally submitted would have shifted the fire truck staging area right next to my property. And moving it to, towards the other side of the street preserves at least one parking space. And I understand from Linda that there would be a nine-foot area between the fire truck staging area and the sort of low planting wall on my property. Very much needed parking for the neighborhood. You know, it's not the ideal solution, but it, it preserves at least one space, so, you know, that's, that's certainly an improvement.
Good.
So, thank you.
Good. Glad to hear that. And it makes it safer for everyone with that space for the fire truck, too. Thank you for your comment. Okay, if that is the only comment, we'll close the public hearing. And any questions from the commission, or is everyone satisfied with the results?
I just had one comment for staff on the staff report. The July 20th staff report, so the current one, there's just the background on the, page two has the wrong date for-
The meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
We've got July 29th.
Oh, thank you.
I'd like to add on page three, let's see, of the resolution, at paragraph seven on that page, where it says, "Therefore, the time of year during which construction will take place shall be such that work will not result in excessive siltation," rather than "is."
Okay, I'm sorry, could you say that again? "Therefore, the time of year during which construction will take place shall be..."
Shall be.
Okay.
Such that. Okay, thanks.
And on page six of the resolution, in paragraph nine, the ever annoying reference to the design review board.
Design review board for so long. I'm having a hard time getting that out of my mind.
Should that be slash, design review board, planning commission?
I have to read the ordinance again, because there's some, there's language, I thought, that says the planning commission sits as the design review board or something.
That's why-
But it's fine to just say planning commission.
Or, design review board in parentheses or something.
Yeah, we've been talking about that one for a while.
Yeah, when they redid the ordinance, I thought they were just going to change it. The planning commission, you know, makes sure things comply with the design review criteria, but however it got written, it's a little bit weird. I'm changing it to planning commission.
I just, I have a question on page six of the resolution under Town Engineer Number Two. An excavation infill permit from the building department in addition to the required building permit, does that, is that a full sentence?
Yes, is required. I'll say it. Or must be obtained from the building department?
And there is, is there a time, is there a time period for when that must be obtained?
That actually has to come in at the same time as the building permit. It's just a separate form that the engineer fills out documenting, you know, how much excavation and fill there is, and-
Okay. Wow. This is very smooth. Are there any other comments, or are we ready for a motion on this?
Then let's have it.
I'll move to approve this with great relief.
And with the amendments proposed by the commissioners?
With the amendments proposed, this would be the 125 Live Oak project. This is, where are we? Application number 17-13 to adopt Resolution 1715 with amendments.
I second the motion.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes. There is a 10-day appeal period and a $400 or $500 fee to be paid to the city clerk, but the motion carries. Thank you all very much for your comments and your staff work.
So I will be needing to recuse myself from the next item because I live within a 300-foot, is it 300 or 500 feet?
500 now.
I live within 300 feet anyway, so I'm-
You're within the 500, yeah.
Okay.
Guess I'll be back for the discussion period.
All right. That was my question. So we have Commissioner Ackerman recusing himself from our next item, our next public hearing, which is 63 Hickory Road. A conditional use permit to legalize a living space retaining wall for a 50% remodel of interior of a single-family residence and includes an excavation permit and combined side setback variance. Could we have the staff report, please?
Thank you. The site is 6,612 square feet in area and moderately sloped at 14%. It's located in the RS6 zone and is developed with a 1,550-square-foot, two-story residence that contains three bedrooms and two baths. There's several elements proposed with the project. On the first floor, the project would legalize and renovate a first-floor bedroom and bathroom. The second floor would involve renovations to a kitchen involving reconfiguring the location of windows, relocating a stairway that leads to access to the first level, and replacing a section of the roof from a lean-to roof to match the gabled roof of the majority of the residents. And then the third element of the project is replacing a failing retaining wall that's at the rear of the property adjacent to a parking area. As well, this would create two onsite parking spaces, and there is a covered space available in the garage. With the project, the house would increase in size to 1,749 square feet and would contain three bedrooms and two-and-a-half baths. So there are three different discretionary approvals that are required. A conditional use permit is required because the site does not meet the minimum area requirement of 7,200 square feet, nor does it meet the minimum width of 62 feet. An excavation permit is also required. As I detailed in the staff report, direct excavation with the project would total about 98 cubic yards. That has to do with construction of the retaining wall and the patio. A portion of the first floor area was not recognized as livable area in the county's tax record for the property. So in this project and legalizing that space, the applicant needed to account for the excavation that had occurred at some point in time to, to achieve the livable area that's there with the eight-foot ceilings. So the applicant estimated that excavation to be about 58 cubic yards, and this total exceeds the 100 cubic yards, bumping it into needing an excavation permit. And then the last discretionary approval is the combined side setback variance. The existing residence intrudes into the side setback. And with the addition of the wall that will be constructed with the first-level patio, the combined side setback would continue to be minimized. Currently, with, with the project, with the house as it stands today, the combined side setback is at 17, and with the project, it would be 12. So there would be an encroachment of an additional five feet into that combined side As detailed in my report, the project would result in a residence in size that's similar to many other residences in the immediate neighborhood. The project would improve the circulation of the interior of the residence, and it would also maintain the three required onsite parking spaces. And also, the footprint of the structure would not change. The applicant is proposing to replace impermeable concrete in several areas with permeable pavers. So actually, the lot cover is going to decrease with the project over the existing condition. Therefore, staff believes that the project was consistent with the findings necessary to meet those for a conditional use permit. As far as the excavation permit goes, several measures would be implemented during construction to ensure that the project meets those findings and requirements necessary for the excavation permit. These would include using straw wattles and crushed rock. The building permit for the project would require that adequate drainage would be provided and approved by the building official. And the resolution contains a condition of approval which limits the excavation activities to- to, to essentially outside of the winter rainy months to prevent sedimentation and erosion. And also, there's provisions in the project to protect trees during construction. For the combined side setback, the, the site is basically bordered on two sides by roadway easements. The front along Hickory and along the side is a, is a joint driveway easement, and that is in the area where this wall would be constructed, which would encroach further into the combined side setback. Due to the location of that easement, the, the presence or feel of this wall wouldn't, wouldn't be as close to that property. Hoping that makes, that, that makes sense. And if the applicant were to cut back the wall essentially so it wouldn't further encroach into the combined side setback over the existing conditions, the patio would, would just be about five feet in width, which would greatly reduce the usability of this outdoor area. And lastly, as I had mentioned, the parking requirement, because this is considered a fifty percent remodel, three onsite spaces are required, and they are meeting that requirement. With that, I recommend that you open the public hearing and take testimony and move to approve Application Number Seventeen dash twenty-eight by adopting Resolution Seventeen dash twenty-six, setting forth the findings and conditions for project approval.
That was an excellent staff report, Michelle. Thank you.
Oh, thank you so much. Thank you.
Any questions of staff before we open the public hearing?
Okay, so I had questions. Just a comment on the staff report. Page four, last paragraph, the first sentence should read sixty-three Hickory, not sixty-two. And I had a question, so I can understand this, on the need for the excavation permit. So for the current work, that's estimated at ninety-eight cubic yards, which doesn't require a permit, that's below the hundred. We're making that first floor, we're legalizing the first floor, but we're not doing any excavation there. So when that changed from unfinished to finished floor, then there was excavation done there to get the eight-foot ceiling. And that would have been approximately fifty-eight cubic yards, not needing an excavation permit. So those two pieces separately wouldn't have required an excavation permit. And I'm just trying to understand this, but because we're legalizing that first floor, we're now combining the excavation work that was done then, because it wasn't permitted, to the amount of excavation that's being done now, therefore taking it over that ceiling, so to speak, and now that, the two together require an excavation permit. Do I have that right?
You do. If, if whoever did this excavation and improvement of this area had gotten a permit when it was done, it would have been under the amount. We are now having to legalize it after the fact, and it is part of this project.
Was it not the current owner who did that work?
I don't, I don't believe it was, but you know, we, we look at the tax assessor's records and, and our records, and there's no, there was no record of a room there, and now all of a sudden there's, we don't really know.
But we get a lot of, we get a lot, we see a lot of this.
Yes, we do.
Illegal construction.
So the plans themselves refer to one- and two-family dwellings that may be designed to the 2013 California Building Code. But that's not the current building code, correct? And maybe that's a question I should pose to the, to the applicant at that point as to the statement on the plans.
No, so, so she's referring to just a citation on the plans, and I'm, I'm assuming it's just a typographical error. We could ask the applicants here, but the building permit will require the applicant to comply with all of the most recent and relevant regulations.
Cindy, I can, we're using. The building code's updated every three years. Two thousand sixteen is the current building code, and it just, actually just got adopted January this year. There's, there's a delay of when it's issued and when it's adopted. So that might have been an error, that was just confusing.
Yeah, I just checked our code, we're using two thousand sixteen.
Okay. And then I know I emailed Michelle on this, and I may be asking the applicant for more information on this, but I had questions on the plans as to the type of easement on the left of the house, which is, goes back, there's sixty-three, then there's sixty-one. It's now identified by Ross Valley Fire as a dedicated fire lane. So I'm gonna have questions for the applicant on, because they've been in discussion with Ross Valley, so maybe they can answer some of my, my questions on that. But a general question for the town, I mean, if I looked at that property, if I looked at the plans, it's easement in the, in the property doesn't have anything designating it that way. Does the town have any kind of mapping of where the fire lanes are in town unless they're marked? I mean, if I looked at this, how would I know that this was a dedicated fire lane?
You wouldn't, and, and the fire department is acquiring them as these fifty percent remodels, remodels occur and requiring that they be marked and painted. So there's no official map that's been adopted by the town that shows Ross Valley Fire Department fire easements.
So if this fifty percent remodel hadn't been going on, would Ross Valley know that that's a dedicated fire lane? Or do they come along and say, we wanna make that a dedicated fire lane?
They come along and they say, we wanna make that a dedicated fire lane. It's, it's, it's a result of all, it's the result of the new state fire codes because there's so many, so many wildfires in California. They've really beefed up the regulate, the, the power that, that fire districts have to require improvements to try to save lives, so it's a result of that.
Linda, is the driveway the, the fire easement, or is there another easement? It is the driveway that's labeled as an easement.
When, when the fire department reviewed this fifty percent remodel, they indicated that they, they are requiring that that be kept open. So what it really means is that you can't park there. And, and if you read the easement the way it's worded, it's for access and egress. It doesn't say that it's for parking. So it, it, it really doesn't change anything unless someone was historically parking there, right? Yeah.
But they've created the three spaces onsite, so.
Right.
They won't need that.
Perfect. Hi, I'm a little confused on the, the site area, because it, this lists, there's two different numbers. And also on the, the slope of the lot, because it seems to be much, the slope seems to be much more than fourteen percent based on, like, those really large retaining walls are in the rear. So I don't know, I, I get, we still need a use permit on the site, right? Because of the, it, it's still under, even with what you have listed here. Is that correct?
Well, Marin Maps, so the, the database and the tool that we use to determine the slope lists it at fourteen point one-six percent. Of course, I mean, I'm not sure if you've ran, run into errors with.
Well, so what your code says is when you have a substandard lot and they wanna do improvements on it, they either have to get a use permit or a hill area residential development permit. Our hill area residential development permit is really just a, a use permit in a hillside area that has more stringent requirements than a, than a use permit on a flat substandard lot. So basically, they are getting a use permit. Were you asking if there was an additional use permit required? Yeah.
No, I mean, I just, I just, I guess basically wanted to confirm that we did that.
Yes.
The lot does need a use permit.
Yes.
Because it's under the, the standards that, for a lot.
For the slope, the lot width and the lot size.
Correct.
Slope and size.
I'm kinda concerned about the setback, the combined side setback issue, because the required and permitted is twenty, and we're gonna go down to twelve here. Are there other properties in the neighborhood that have a similar setback issue?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
I'll, I'll, just because some of you may not have heard it, I'll give my little nineteen-seventy-three speech. So in nineteen-seventy-three, Fairfax adopted a slope ordinance, and they changed, they increased all their setback requirements, they increased their minimum lot size requirements, and they rendered, I would, I mean, I haven't actually gone out and counted, but I would say eighty percent of their properties are now legal non-conforming. And you've got a lot of houses that were built when the setback requirements were either three feet or five feet, and there were no combined setbacks. And the lots are small, so most of the properties are non-conforming. And having a combined setback of twelve is not unusual at all. They meet the, they exceed the minimums, you know, on the one side, minimum's five on the, right? So.
Is it that the, the sloped nature of the rear of it that cuts back on that combined setback?
That increases the side setback. Yeah, so the side setbacks are smaller if you're a flat lot, but the steeper, if you're over a ten percent slope, your, your setback requirements increase.
Open the public hearing, I guess?
I actually have a question, I just, because I was having a hard time finding where this encroachment was occurring, so I just wanna make sure it's, it's on the, which way is north? Is north up? Oh, no. Okay, so it's on the east side of the house, next to the easement, is that correct? That's where the proposed, what do you wanna call it?
Variance?
Encroachment? If you look at, can you hear me? If you look at Sheet A four in the, the new lower floor plan? And you see, it says new retaining wall, and it has this wall that varies in height from two to seven feet, six inches. It's a portion of that wall. The planter isn't, isn't accounted for in that, it's a landscape feature. So it's, it's a portion of this footing, or not the footing, that, just this wall that encroaches it to the combined side setback. It still meets the side setback requirement. It's the combined side setback that gets further diminished. And that, that mostly has to do with the bump out on the house on the opposite side. I think that's three feet, is three feet away from the property line.
So can I just ask how you define, I guess, construction in Fairfax in terms of a patio encroaching, if it's, is there a vertical plane that sets that setback? Is it the retaining wall in this case that's, so the patio is not an issue? So I could have a slab out there and create a patio, but is it because the retaining wall is higher than three feet or four feet?
It's because the retaining wall is a structure, and you're not supposed to be building structures in the combined side yard setback. So it's the, it's the, it's the retaining wall aspect of that patio that's a structure in the setback and requires a variance.
But it doesn't have to do with the height of that retaining wall, it's just the fact that it's a structure, it could be two feet high, it would still be a structure.
Right. If, if the retaining wall was not part of the house foundation, you know, this is attached to the house foundation, and it was standalone, we, we would consider it, it might need a height variance if it went over six feet, right? Then it would be a fence or a retaining wall, standalone retaining wall, but this is part of the foundation system of the house. So it just needs the setback variance.
Right. Okay, so if they went back and made it standalone, then we're talking about a different kind of animal, just in terms of?
Then it would be just a standalone retaining wall that couldn't exceed six feet in height without a variance from you. Maybe I'm complicating things.
No, no, I understand, I'm just wondering why it was designed that, this way. You know, why is this retaining wall attached to the existing structure if it could have been standalone?
Well, I don't think it could have been.
Oh, I see.
I think to support the parking area behind the house and to rebuild the wall of the house, it has to be part of the, that back foundation system.
I would push the structural engineer to redesign it. But that's, I mean, that doesn't help us tonight. So this, this area, I'm trying to relate it to the photographs that we've got, and this is basically, I'm looking at the, the six photographs, and this is occurring where we see those shrubs and the round, or the curved curb.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
So that is already high, and they're, they're excavating to level that out with the, the finished floor. Okay. Can they, so if they chose to build anything, I mean, they, they couldn't, if they wanted to maintain the existing setback, they can only build, they could only build how far out?
Five feet.
About five feet.
Mm-hmm.
So they could build out five feet and have a retaining wall. Okay.
Okay, are we ready to open the public hearing with the applicant? Like to make a comment, please hit the button to get a red light on this and give us your name and address, please, sir.
Good evening, my name is Eric Woodhouse. I actually live in Mill Valley, so I'm not sure my address is relevant. I'm here representing the applicant. Pretty much everything was covered in the staff report. I'm impressed with the detail and thought Michelle put into this, so I don't really have a presentation to make. I will say a couple things. I apologize for the building code dates not being correct. These plans were actually originally drawn in November and December of last year and submitted in January, so that will be updated when we get to the building phase. As far as the excavation goes, as far as we can determine, the house was originally built exactly as it is, so there was never any modification made. Tax records show finished basement and unfinished basement, but it's all basement. Obviously, I can't prove that. Other than that, I am happy to answer any questions.
Excuse me. Yeah, I think I'm struggling with some of the same questions that Esther. Can you explain what the, what the area of this new patio? It looks like there's probably, there's like a small window in that room right now, so I think you, you need to get more light.
Yeah.
In that area, but I'm just wondering if it, if it maybe, if it might be possible to be, to be done a different way, and if the, the comment that staff made was that that retaining wall also is needed for the new parking behind? Is that also the case?
No, that, the, I mean, the interest is in replacing that small window with a sliding door and allowing egress and light from the patio. allowing egress and light from the patio beyond. The retaining wall is simply to support the hill that is there now, which would go away when that patio is cut into it. And that's, that's part of where our excavation yardage is coming from.
So if there was a window instead of a sliding door, would the retain, would you still need a retaining wall or maybe not as large of a retaining wall? What, is that possible?
I mean, yes. If we are not permitted to put a door in there and had a window that was higher up, the grade could then be higher, and that would, that would remove the need for a retaining wall. I mean, there's no retaining wall there now, and we could leave the condition as it is. But that's, that's not what we're proposing to do, and that would significantly diminish the value of what we're trying to do.
Can you go, so you're going down, you're wiping out those steps, right? You're going down?
Correct.
But is there a reason why you would need more than five feet of patio for daylight or ventilation or views? Is there a sightline? I mean, I know, I know this is much nicer, but I'm just wondering if there is another criteria that's pushing the depth.
Not as far as I know. It's, it's all below grade. I mean, the important thing to realize, this is all inward facing wall. It's not, not wall that's facing the street.
Could I say something, even though it's not my turn to talk? You know, what I felt about this patio area is that this property, even though it's not on a corner, it effectively is on a corner because it's surrounded on two sides by street. And while they could build a retaining wall in their front yard to try to create private outdoor space, they really don't have any private outdoor space. And even though this isn't entirely closed in, just having that area below grade there provides just a little bit of outdoor kind of private space that's screened from the access easement. But that was what I felt about it, so.
Well, I like, I like the improvements, the interior. Are you the architect, designer?
Uh.
Designer?
I work with, I work with the contractor, and the design is mostly his. I did the drawing, but he mostly did the design.
Okay. Well, I like the idea behind this design. I just noticed on the upstairs, you lost, you lost a shower for the bedroom. So I was wondering if, if anybody looked at that creating, I mean, it doesn't really affect what we're talking about. I'm just.
I can't speak to that because I haven't looked at it in several months, and I honestly don't recall.
Except for that, it's a, it's a big improvement over what's there now.
We'll definitely look at that.
Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you. If there are no other comments from the public, we can close the public hearing, bring it back to discussion amongst the planning commission. I guess I, for one, don't have any issues with the retaining wall and we're, we're, I can't seem to say my Rs today, rear patio, but.
Okay, I just want to make one recommendation on the resolution. First page, the first whereas. The proposed residence conforms to most of the regulations set forth in the residential single-family RS6 zone district, and findings can be made for the variance of nonconforming aspects by requested, by the requested excavation permit.
Sorry, could you repeat that?
Just adding the words, the variance of nonconforming aspects by the requested excavation permit.
For the variance.
I just think it's important to keep in the record that there was a nonconforming aspect to it. We don't believe these folks did that, but, and a comment, I'm very happy to see properties improve in Fairfax structurally especially, and safety. So thank you.
Do we have a motion then?
I'd like to make a motion to approve application number 17-28 and resolution 17-26 with the one comment that I made about the language change in whereas number one.
All of those in favor?
Well, I'll second this motion.
Oh, okay. That, that helps. We have a second, we have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Abstain.
I want to abstain. I, I just, I don't understand. I just, I, I'm struggling with the retaining wall aspect of it, but motion, motion carries, so.
Okay. Okay, the motion does carry. There is a 10-day appeal period and a fee of $500 with the city clerk, but your motion, your permits are approved.
And for the record, Ben's microphone needs to be repaired.
Okay, and I think Commissioner Swift wanted to add some discussion prior to the minutes.
Yeah, I think.
Here comes Commissioner Ackerman.
Oh. Well, I wanted to add, because the agenda didn't have that item on there, but also the fact that I know the commission, before I joined it, had come up with a list of, a to-do list, if you will, of things that needed to be addressed by the commission, may have prioritized those items, and I believe it's been a bit of time since the commission's looked at that. And I thought it would be a good time to kind of put that back on, on the radar and maybe start looking at that again. Would you like us to add that to your next meeting agenda? You want to review that, review your list? Yes. Okay.
Sure.
Yeah, I heartily would like to get back to that. Loose strings, loose ends, you know, we don't want those. So let's, if you can find maybe the latest.
Oh, I have it.
Okay, good.
I think we actually took care of a couple of items, which were the second, the second unit ordinance, and there was, the junior unit was also on there, and some of the town center workshops. But yeah, we could take another look at that. I don't remember those items.
And then, if I may, I circulated a, well, I don't know how it got circulated, but I sent to Linda and Michelle a suggestion that since we did do one of the things on the list and passed a rooftop solar renewable energy easy permit system, that we add a permanent condition when staff feels, you know, it's valid for that property. As worded here, applicant is encouraged to install small residential rooftop solar and renewable energy systems pursuant to Town Ordinance 17, 138, 200. That has removed unreasonable barriers and minimized costs to achieve cost-effective installations of small residential rooftop solar energy systems, no larger than 10 kilowatts alternating current. We have a lot of standard conditions that we insert, such as the indemnities and things. I would like to see this become one of those. Probably need to run this by town council, maybe legal staff, but it's just something I wanted to bring up.
I think that's an interesting and excellent suggestion. The, I'd like to hear Linda's comments or our new planning director's comments on, on the idea of a permanent suggested condition, suggestion, but that seems like something we could do pretty quickly. It fits really well, two comments. One is that this fits really well with something that's going on, which I was just out there trying to get information on while I had that little break, because this just came up tonight, so I wasn't prepared for it. I could bring back information, or I could email it to Linda for distribution. But there's a statewide initiative, and what I was trying to find out is just to remind myself what group was really spearheading it. But the notion was to really try to achieve rooftop solar on, with a goal of 50% of the houses in California. So that would be a very ambitious goal. And the idea of that was to actually try to put it into ordinance in many, many towns throughout the state. So there's a push even beyond suggestions to try to really push rooftop solar. Now, we also need to remember that there's, and I see what you say here, that it's, I think you say this in here, where it's, it should say that where, whether rooftop solar is practical in the location, because in a lot of Fairfax locations, it's not due to trees, due to hillsides. We live in a hilly area, and so there are a surprising number of houses in the town in which it just wouldn't make any sense to put solar on the roof. My other major comment on that would be that there's a similar, if you're thinking about solar as a, something that A is a very cost-effective thing to do right now, B is environmentally a great thing to do, and C, the town already has policies to streamline the process, there are a couple of other things that are like that as well. One of them is insulation. In particular, putting insulation in attics is really an incredible way to keep the heat in, in the winter and keep it cool in the summer. It's just astonishing how effective that is. And also putting insulation in walls, which is a bit of a project. It can certainly be done if you're not doing another project, but if you are doing another project and you're opening the walls, it is absolutely ridiculous to not put insulation in those walls. And really do a good job of it, too. Not all insulation is created equal.
Actually, nowadays, you can, you can just have some small holes and blow it into the walls, so it's much easier.
Well, yeah, yeah, you can do that. It's still a project. I mean, it creates a lot of dust, and you have to re-drywall and repaint, patch those holes and repaint. You can do it from the inside or the outside. Yeah, you can definitely blow insulation in the walls. So that would be another thing that kind of has a similar flavor to it. It's, as, as a planning commission, we address people who are working on houses or building houses, and insulation is really, it actually is more cost-effective than solar. I mean, if you're really thinking about saving money and saving energy, the first thing you want to do is change your light bulbs LEDs. The next thing you want to do is insulate the heck out of your house, and then after that, you can think about solar. So it really is, and then a third thing that's kind of like that is, is energy-efficient modern windows, double-pane windows. And insulation and windows also both have the incredible advantage of reducing noise. I just went, you saw me after our first hearing tonight, I went running down and spoke with the neighbor, and what I was suggesting to him was just, from his point of view, he should really consider insulating his walls and making sure he's got good windows in there, because it'll save him money, it'll keep him warm in the winter, it'll keep him cool in the summer, and he will be amazed at how much quieter it is. So if we're thinking about this, we ought to think about all those things.
So I had a couple comments on that. One, if you're doing remodeling or, and you're tearing out your walls, aren't there requirements to insulate them? I mean, there are building requirements already for insulation and double-pane windows when you're remodeling. So, I mean, that's there, and that would be a requirement for anyone. As, and a question for staff. Commissioner Green wanted to add this as a requirement on our, on our resolutions, but when we get a project before us, it's already, we're not recommending that they change the project when it's already before us. This is, you know, a comment to encourage the applicant to use solar, but that should be something that's addressed before we get a project, and not as a part of a resolution when we're looking to approve or deny a project. So I'm not sure it's applicable for what we do in resolutions.
Well, I think that's true, too. And certainly, an application for any project could include a phrase like this that refers to the easy way they can get rooftop solar. I mean, I would, I would love to not make this a suggestion. You know, if we were, if we were in China, I would say, you're going to do this, we're going to order everybody to do this, and the country would be better off for it. But I can tell you, though, there's, there's also reverse solar planning you can do. We had a wall facing the sunset, and it got so hot in the afternoon that our house actually heated up from, you know, from 5:00 to sunset. We painted it white. The house doesn't heat up anymore. It's all day long, it's 10 degrees. We did insulate, we did put double-pane windows. We're 10 degrees colder in the house. Sometimes we're actually cold on an 80-degree day, want to go outside and get some heat. So it's worth just some paint, on, white paint on a dark wall can make a heck of a difference. So that's where I'm coming from, and I would just like to have the thought be vetted, as they say these days. I won't use the president's phrase, vetted. And, and, and run by legal and see what we can do to encourage people in a, in a public way, a reminder and/or a condition. You know, I'm not Chairman Mao. I'd love to order this, but we can't do that here, so.
When somebody comes in to do a remodel, are they provided information on, on things such as our ordinance or ways that they can do things like this when they come in and start that dialogue? So they're aware of these things? I'm just thinking that could be a more appropriate place before work starts to educate them.
Your mic.
Sometimes the light goes on, but the mic doesn't.
Yeah, we should probably get similar mics for everybody on that rostrum. So we were, we were discussing how this could be approached, and that's probably an ongoing conversation that we need to have. As pointed out, there's a number of different options. There could be an informational handout. It could consist of a green building checklist that maybe facilitates somebody's path towards approval. You do the following things, and it gets you points toward approval. There's a number of different approaches, including if, and I know Fairfax is deeply interested, because I read your general plan and some of your work programs, so in terms of sustainable, green building practices, you know, it's obviously a deeply felt concern and value among the townspeople and the representatives. So I think it's a work program we come back. So I think it's a work program we come back with and explore different options and see what the flavor of the town is, what the desire is, with recommendations from the planning commission towards the town council. But, yeah, the solar thing, I agree, I fly into Phoenix and I look down at the roofs and I see very few solar, and you just, you know, it's 110 degrees all summer, it's like, what's going on? So, you know, to what Fairfax can do, referencing Bruce's comments, the county has solar aspect studies where they look at where it really makes dollars and cents, sense, to locate solar, and of course, if you have north-facing, steep aspects, it's going to be challenging to get enough sunlight to those systems. So in terms of information to applicants, advising them of a streamlined review process, what Fairfax already does to facilitate that, to reduce regulatory permitting obstacles, things like that. So handouts are an obvious aspect of where we take people and say, hey, think, seriously, think about including this in your project, because it really doesn't cost you, and it may, as I said in the final analysis, be part of helping them get their approval. You know, something that's, maybe there's certain aspects we don't like, but this could help enhance their odds. So sort of a beauty contest where you say you get enough points and, you know, it tips you over towards an approval rather than revise the project or continue it or perhaps denial. So all these are things that we should probably do when we're not sitting here late at night, but we'd be happy to work on that and come back to your commission with options.
Maybe that could be added to that list.
Can I make a suggestion? You know, the new building code has gotten very stringent in terms of upgrades, and I think it's the Green Building Code 2016 that actually has a list of mandatory measures that you have to upgrade X number of things, depending on the project valuation, you know, as the valuation goes higher, the stakes go higher. But I was going to suggest, maybe there are incentives in Fairfax to, you know, because they give you a lot of options. It's like this long table. Maybe Fairfax provides incentives to go with solar, you know, when you have 50 things to, well, not that many, but when you have 20 things to pick from, maybe solar, you know, you get some kind of credit for that in Fairfax, just to make it easier, because this list can be overwhelming. Some of it is just minimally required, but you also have a choice.
Yeah, I like this discussion, and I really appreciate that suggestion and your offer to work on it. Just, one thing is to, you're probably aware, but we have a PACE program here in Fairfax, so that's something we can offer people, that the property, property, something, I can never remember what it stands for, but the idea is you finance, your financing for energy improvements can be tacked on to the, to the home mortgage and financed that way, so that if you sell your house, it rolls, it's not, it goes on with the house. So we have passed that in Fairfax. Also, the, just another comment about insulation, because really, it's just, insulation is astonishingly cost-effective, but it's messy, it's dusty, and so when you're doing construction, even if it's, say you're doing construction, you're moving an interior wall in the house, maybe it isn't even a 50% remodel, but the whole house is going to be dusty, it's going to be a construction zone, you're going to kind of halfway move out of there while you're doing the work, that would be the time to insulate the exterior walls. So just to get that, get that into people's thinking that, hey, now's the time, while you've, while you've got a dusty mess anyway, go ahead and cut those little holes in the tops and bottoms of the walls and blow the insulation in. Oh, boy, you'd be glad you did. Okay, thanks, glad we're doing it.
Don't know if it's going anywhere right now, but thank you for considering this, and I would like to put this sort of close to the top of the list, if it's going to go down the list as we can. I mean, just think about it, if we're, if we're number one in electric cars and you've got a lot of solar going on, you're not buying much gasoline, you're not contributing to the pollution situation, and that's, that's where this comes from. Not an economic aspect. I mean, I would put solar on my roof even if it weren't economically feasible, just to not use the grid.
To be fair, I don't feel comfortable putting it at the top of the list, because this list was created and voted on by the commission, so I'm just, as the latest, the most recent thing, it's going to go at the bottom, but then you guys can move stuff around.
We can have that discussion and take a look.
I'm just lobbying.
Commissioner Swift, were those all the items you had to?
Yes, ma'am.
To bring up? Okay. So then, if there are no other items for discussion by commissioners or staff, you can move on with the June, was that June 29th, the planning commission meeting? With those minutes, because I don't believe I was here.
Nor was I.
I have a correction. On page four, where they have, towards the bottom of the page, where I have my, listing my comments, the third bullet point, she would like to see alternate sketches for the proposed dormer. It wasn't for the parking, it was for the dormer. I had some other, but I have to find where I wrote it. Well, I also saw on page nine, also where my comments in the middle of the page, the second bullet point, the second paragraph, Mr. Krut stated the eve, but it spelled, it's the wrong eve, it's E-A-V-E. I think that's it for me.
I just have one correction, page six, at the top, fairly obvious, Commissioner Green provided the following comments. She referred to the resolution. It's just he, that's all.
I believe that was Commissioner Carolyn, though, that did that, I think. I don't remember.
I don't either. This is just a syntax issue. I'm not sure who made that comment.
Yeah, I think I checked the video on that.
So it's okay, not a big deal.
Did you say that you watched the video, and Laura's the one that said it? So then we have to change it to Laura's.
So it's Commissioner Caroline provided the following comments.
Because I saw the Commissioner Green and the she, so I went back and looked.
I have rarely met anyone more detail-oriented than myself.
I'm not sure that was a compliment.
No, we love that about you.
But I left my markups at home, so if there is something, there was one, I think, that I'm not finding, I can email you, right?
Okay.
Yeah, but, but there is one on page four, one, two, three, I guess, three, Commissioner Gonzalez Parper provided the following comment. Second bullet, I think it says that, that I stated that the commission was not in the position to enforce anything regarding historic, I guess, historically significant buildings, and I think that should say, or what I meant to say was qualified, that we're not qualified to enforce historical significance. Then there was another one. On page two, I think it's just probably a typo, second paragraph, one, two, three, four, five, six, six lines down, it just says, Parper asked if she was correct, that the overall height of the building was not changing, that they were at, just adding a dormer. It's just kind of an awkward. And then there was one more, where did it go? Maybe that's the one I may have to email you about. There was a reference to the far, you know, which one was the tall building with the height? It was Acacia, right?
Teen Acacia.
Acacia. So I think it just, it talks about, okay, so on page nine, Commissioner Gonzalez Parper provided the following comments, one, two, the third bullet down, I think I said that the whole concept of the floor area, okay, well, maybe, I was talking about the height, I'll go back and look at that.
Okay.
The height limit for the building, and we were, anyway, I'll go back and look.
Okay. We'll wait, we'll expect that from you.
Okay, do we approve the minutes by motion? Is there a motion to approve them?
Motion to approve the minutes as corrected and edited.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And I abstain.
And I abstain.
Okay, motion passes, the minutes, with a comment to be forwarded. I have, can I ask a question of, I've been signing these resolutions from prior meetings, some of them dating back to February, and there's one I just don't recall, Twenty Meadow Way. Can someone remind me what that was exactly?
I can say something that might help you remember.
Okay.
It was the one where Laura brought to your attention that I had required a civil engineer on the foundation aspects of it, and she said that architects were qualified, that's the right one, right? I'm thinking of Twenty Meadow. And Laura pointed out that architects are qualified to do whatever work was being done there.
No, I think it's like, had to do something with a structural engineer.
Yeah, but that was.
And I couldn't understand why, when it was all within the building footprint, and that, yeah, that a civil engineer, civil structural engineer could serve the same function.
So there was a driveway up to the house, and they were putting a laundry room underneath the house, and an office kind of at the back of the garage, and it was, they weren't popping outside the footprint of the house, yeah. And we won't do this to you again, we just, it got so crazy with that Victory Village that we, we thought we were keeping up with the resolutions, I believe we were, and then when we went back to try to put them in the binder, we couldn't find the signed copies. We may one day find the signed copies, but, right, they're buried somewhere.
I have these signed for you. Thank you for refreshing my memory on that one. And with that, we're done, so I'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you, staff. Ben, it's good to meet you, great to have you on board, look forward to working with you. Okay, we're adjourned.